We'll start with the pledge. Mr. Michael's in the back. We'll begin the unanimous pledge.
Let us lead you into the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, can you say a prayer?
Yes. Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for all the little things, like our lungs and our feet and our hair on our bodies, well. We ask, Lord, that you will place an anointing upon the council, God, to lead to these next couple of years, Lord, that we're here. And not just the next couple of years, Lord, but to continue to guide and to teach us. God, we ask for your mercy, Lord, that your grace will be upon us wherever we may go. We thank you in my name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Ben. Nita, roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Ellathor?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
The quorum is declared.
Yes, we have several modifications to the agenda. Under G, citizen comments, special presentations, we need to add C, table discussion on donation of the SLB Big Band; D, sky-high discount request for Mona Vista Chamber for the Southern Rocky Mountain Ag Conference; and E, IT to present a new webpage for the city of Mona Vista; F, waste management will be here with a presentation as well. I move to approve those modifications.
It's been moved and seconded. Yes?
We also need the added executive session.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I apologize. We need to add an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402, 4B. I'd like to modify that motion to include the executive session.
And I would add to modify that motion to move item 1B, discussion.
I think we need to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Oh, that's okay. We have been too many minutes. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded for the modification to the agenda. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I move to amend the, to modify the agenda. Move, simply move item 1B, discussion wording, Proposition DD to J2 after J1. Under resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. We move the, under G, 1B, discussion on the wording on Proposition DD ballot question to resolution, make it J2. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I don't believe we need to move that because we need to discuss this as a full council before we move that to a resolution position.
Actually, that's the purpose of the, of the resolution itself, is to create a position for discussion.
Then it needs to stay where Nita's got it. So we can discuss it. Then if we decide, we will move it down to a resolution.
Not sure why, but that's the line from the reason appears.
Nita, would you like to comment, please?
I just, we put it under the scheduled appearance for discussion for the purpose of all five board members discussing it and making that decision to move to a resolution. After you discuss it, if you all agree to move it to a resolution, you may add that at that time under the resolutions this evening.
That's fine.
We have a motion and a second, so we need to vote on it.
We have to.
Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
No.
Counselor Ellathor?
No.
Counselor Segala?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Becker?
No, we'll move it like we talk, so no.
Okay. No vote carries four to one to, to not move G1B to J2.
Okay, approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting November 21st. Are you on approval of accounts payable?
Move to approve the consent agenda and review and approval of accounts payable.
Second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting November 21st, 2019. Review and approval of accounts payable. Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Gives me a great pleasure this evening. I'm glad we have a packed house. To give a certificate appreciation to Robert Gill, who's our HR coordinator, HR and safety coordinator. Did I screw that up? Yeah, perfect. Anyway, he's been with us for a year. It seems like longer than that. He's retired from the Air Force and is continuing his career of public service, helping with our HR and our safety programs. And one of the biggest accomplishments he's had in this last year was bringing forward our compliance on safety programs with SIRS, which actually resulted in a cost savings to the city on our annual renewal. So he's done a great job for the city. We're looking forward to him continuing. And why don't you come on up here, Bob? Thanks, sir. Very much. Stand.
Citizen comments and special presentations, scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk later than noon on Monday, Friday, the meeting. So fundraiser for the Mona Vista PD. Do you have a sign up sheet for here? Be sure and slide that sheet, please. And state your name.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Clark, and I am a fellow citizen of Rio Grande County. I recently did a fundraiser, as most of you know, for the Mona Vista Police Department and the Scott Carter Foundation. So this is the result for what the public has attained for the police department. We have these cute puddle bear book and plush sets for the littler ones. And these are going out to children that have been victims of domestic violence, child abuse, bullying, you name it. It's how the police department wants to disperse them. So we've also got these Hello Happy, Safe from Home Be Breathe and No Worries books. They're kind of a coping book, an activity book, to help the kids through the situations rather than just pushing it off and bottling it up. So this is what you, Mona Vista, has provided for the police department. Thank you.
Discussion on the wording on Proposition DD ballot question?
Aye.
Is that you?
Yeah. I can address just the simple issue that came up. Don't know if you're familiar with Proposition DD. It had to do with gambling, sports betting, I think was the actual terminology used, which technically legalized the operation of gambling across the state, not just in the casinos, but online and that kind of thing. Which, wherever you stand on that, was not really the issue. The main issue was simply the fact that it did not specifically in the ballot quotation, in the ballot entry, specify the fact that it involved legalizing gambling. I checked around. I didn't, you know, it didn't matter one way or the other. If that's what the people want to do and the proposition did pass, then that's fine. I may or may not happen to agree or disagree with it. But my concern came up when I read the wording of the actual ballot measure itself, not the full-blown measure in what they call the blue book, but what was on the ballot itself, which unfortunately does not clearly, at least this was my first impression, does not clearly state that the purpose of it was to legalize gambling. It was implied, but I talked to a couple of citizens and administration here in the city about the issue. And the response I got was that, gosh, I didn't pick up on that. And that was a couple of different individuals right here in this room, actually. But beyond that, I asked the question some more. And every time that I brought it up, it was, it was, no, I didn't realize that. So the point of this resolution is simply to inquire about the possible or the potential oversight of the wording in that ballot, not specifically related to what this city council usually deals with. But let me, let me read the simple resolution here. Whereas the city council of Mona Vista is charged with the duty to represent our local electorate, and whereas issues may arise outside of our jurisdiction which nonetheless affect our quality and way of life; and whereas it's brought to our attention that potential wording oversights may exist in a recent statewide ballot issue; and whereas Proposition DD, which was presented to the voters on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, fails to specifically detail the issue of legalizing gambling in the state of Colorado; and whereas this issue may be implied by the reference to regulation of sports betting, implied reference is not typically the standard for ballot measures; and whereas this issue requires analysis by elected officials of the state of Colorado, not us; therefore, it is hereby resolved, this council instructs and authorizes our acting city attorney to correspond with the Colorado Secretary of State, Senator Crowder, Representative Valdez, regarding the potential, potential critical oversight relating to the aforementioned ballot issue. The objections that I have heard to this is pretty much that it's not going to make any difference. They are elected officials and are going to ignore it. That's kind of a slight on every imaginable elected official that exists, including us. My answer to that, and that's been the primary objection, is that if we do nothing, then what's to stop something like this from coming up again? Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's not a misstatement. And I, certainly I'd want to hear the evidence to that effect. But the point is that a lot of things have gone wrong in this country, quite honestly, from folks not speaking up. This is a no-budget issue, and it's a no-brainer. It's simply requesting from the Secretary of State clarification of if, you know, did this get by? And is this a misstatement? Is this a, an implied possible misleading wording? We're very careful about the wording on these things, specifically having to do with, I don't know if you're familiar with Tabor, but it's, Tabor is simply a statewide issue that has been settled and been in place for a long time that specifically specifies how the wording is to be put together in a ballot issue. And this complied with that. But there's another issue, and that is that, did it state clearly what the issue was about? And in my research, talking to folks that are of substantial repute in our town, the answer was no. I didn't see that at all. In any case, I want to open that up to discussion and eventually a vote to pass or deny the resolution. The resolution, again, is not to fix anything statewide. It's to request a clarification so that if there is a problem, they can deal with it. It's not going to be for us. And this seems like it's outside the jurisdiction of the local authorities. But it does affect, as we said in the resolution itself, affect our quality, potentially affect our quality and way of life, depending on what your position is on the proposition, which doesn't matter because if, the only thing we're concerned with is, was it worded properly? And rather than just sending a letter or making a phone call to the Secretary of State, it carries a little more weight if it comes as a resolution from the council. It's the only reason it's being brought up. It'll be done tonight, and it'll be over with. There is no follow-up. There is no budget issue. It's simply a request. So with that, I will open it up for discussion.
Forrest, I was curious. Would you mind kind of reiterating what CML had to say about the concerns?
Sure. So, you know, I think this is an interesting question. And I'll say, I don't have to say this, but I did vote for this proposition. And honestly, I didn't read the blue book. If I had, I'm not sure that would have changed my vote necessarily. But, you know, when I read the question, I thought about $29 million annually to fund state water projects and commitments to pay for regulation of sports betting. Honestly, didn't know that sports betting isn't legal, lies in Colorado yet, or, I didn't know that. So from that standpoint, I can understand how that concedes some confusion. But I thought, well, let me see what Kevin Bommer, who's executive director of CML, has to say. Kevin's usually a pretty conversational person. And so I sent him an email. And his response was, the blue book is pretty explicit, I believe, in stating that yes, vote would authorize sports betting and taxes. So, you know, and he sent me a link to the blue book. And I just provided his response to the council along with the Quick Ballot Reference Guide page that had DD there. So the question that you're facing is really philosophical. If the council believes that that wording was misleading or, you know, improper, and there is the kind of thing, like when we do, we struggle writing, you know, ballot stuff that we think is compliant, you know? But I'm sure that they had, you know, Tabor, ballot certainties and all that stuff, too. So it really is a philosophical issue for the council to address if you want to do this. I think we're pretty clear what CML's position is on it, very succinctly. And like I said, Kevin's usually a little more conversational. So clearly, I think I annoyed him, but that's fine. Wouldn't be the first time. So I'm just basically reporting what his response was. Like, there it is. That's what the blue book said, you know? And I didn't read the blue book. I just saw the water thing, and I thought, that's really important to get funded. It is disturbing that it doesn't say how much of that money will then go to the water funding and how much to regulation. But, you know, apparently it passed whatever legal tests the state had to get it on the ballot.
I can comment on that. The, I don't know if I made it clear in here, but what the city manager says is absolutely right. If you read the blue book, which I did, it's extremely clear what's going on. But the ballot issue itself, which is succinct, did not touch on that. In fact, the, and that here, the ballot issue question, I could read if I could find it. Oh, it's on my other computer. Sorry. Bear with me. There it is. Okay. The actual ballot issue is as follows. Right there. There it is. This is the actual ballot issue. Just bear with me. It's not too long. But shall state taxes be increased by $29 million annually to fund state water projects and commitments to pay for the regulation of sports betting through licensed casinos by authorizing a tax on sports betting of 10% of net sports billing proceeds? And to impose the tax on persons licensed to conduct sports betting? You didn't necessarily have to follow that, but the, as the city manager has indicated, there's no indication in at least that snippet of information to talk about or even present the idea of legalized gambling. And, you know, maybe you're in favor of legalized gambling. Maybe you're not. I don't know. I just know that, as he also indicated, that a reasonable person just reading the ballot issue itself does not draw from that that gambling is, online gambling and whatever is illegal in Colorado. And this ballot measure makes it legal. That was a whole, a whole, it's a, it's a, it's a broad jump. And what we're doing is not, by this resolution, is not rejecting or attacking what was put on the ballot. It's simply requesting a clarification as to what does the Secretary of State, which is, that's their department, the Secretary of State does. What does that do for the results of the election, I guess? But at that point, it's out of our hands. That's, it's not, this is not, we're not moving into state issues here. And I want to make that real clear. It's just, we are in the state. We're not dealing with Maine or Arizona and their issues. We're dealing with the state of Colorado, which we are a part of, and it does affect us. So if it's legitimate and the review that just from our letter of inquiry says so, we're done. That's it. If there is an issue, we're also done. Because that's up to the Secretary of State and our legislature to figure something out. But the point is that there definitely is a question remaining. And that's, that's all that, that's all we want to clear up by passing this resolution, which simply authorizes our city attorney, who is already, we've already talked about that, is already considering the possibility of that. This just adds some weight to that letter. It's all, and then we're done. It'll take a lot less time to finish this and get on with it than we've spent talking about. It's pretty simple.
Any other questions? Any question?
I have a question about the gambling part, but the water project part.
I'm sorry, but I'll have to get this bit of the crowd. I'll need you to go to the stand and sorry, then. If the mayor chooses to make public comment at this time.
We'll take the brief public comment.
Hi, I'm Martha Locke. I live here in Mona Vista. It's the first part of Proposition DD that drew my attention with the water projects. I don't know what the water projects are. I do know that the Front Range needs more water for their growing population, and they're looking at the San Luis Valley to get that. And we have precious little, as it is, depending on our weather. We rely on it a lot. We have a lot of agriculture going along around here. I would like to know exactly what those water projects are and if they're going to take water away from us. So that, that's, that's where I found the gambling part. I'm not going to gamble one way or another, so I don't care. So, but I care about our water. And I would like, I would like to have seen that a little more clearly stated as to what those projects are. Because it is a state, since it's a state proposition, and let's face it, Denver's more populated than we are. The Front Range is more populated than the San Luis Valley. Are they going to use that money to come up with projects that will take water away from us? That's my question. Thank you.
That's actually a good point because, but that's, that has to do with one of the reasons why I was not particularly in favor of a proposition. But that doesn't really have to do with this. If I'm against something and the people of the state of Colorado pass it, you know, I'm done. So this was a kind of a, kind of a separate issue. So, are there more questions?
My name's Jenny Neering. I'm a citizen of Mona Vista. I just want to comment a few things on the notion of how is that money spent? Again, it's in the blue book. But it's, it would fund the Colorado Water Plan. And the Colorado Water Plan is a document that took many, many years to develop. It's available online. There's a whole slew of different types of projects in it. There are agricultural projects. There are environmental projects. There's absolutely projects trying to figure out how to meet the water needs of the Front Range of Colorado and Colorado's growing population. So that, again, is all part of, it was all, it's all in the blue book. And the hard thing is, is, from my opinion, this was a ballot initiative that was artfully written in a political way. And politics are pretty obscure. And so the obscurity in the ballot initiative was intentional. And the ballot initiative passed muster to get on the ballot. And when there's issues with how a ballot is, is written, you've got to be much more on the front end of all of this. So, but it just speaks to the onus of voters to read the blue book. And it's not an easy thing to do, even on an off-ballot year where there's only two things to vote on. You still have to set aside a big chunk of time to read the blue book. And then you also have to do your own research if you want to know how much, how much of the money is going to go to the water plan? How much, you know, how it's going to be parsed out? And it's in the blue book. Including, I believe, 15% of all the income is going to go to gambling addiction issues. So it's in the blue book. And in my opinion, it's an artfully written, and I'm not, I'm not putting a value on it, but the ballot initiatives are obscured, obscurely written. So the people who wrote it wanted it passed, and they got, they got what they wanted. So that's my comment. Thank you.
And our position, of course, is with this resolution is not to rescind or change anything to do with the ballot, who was passed, simply to clear up any, I'm, what I'm thinking of, quite honestly, is not even this proposition, but for future reference. of, quite honestly, is not even this proposition, but for future reference. And this, if there, if there is something that's, that's unclear here, and I think with my communication with some folks here in town, it certainly was an issue. And I agree, the blue book explains everything very clearly, very clear in the blue book. But as our city manager indicated, it seemed clear enough that apparently that wasn't absolutely necessary. And I don't know if that would have changed the vote any at all, but was certainly surprised to find out that there was something else intended there. And so that isn't necessarily going to change any of this. I don't, I don't see this changing. I don't see this proposition changing. All I see is a question brought to, and these things need to be questioned. We need to be questioned. Our president needs to be questioned. Our legislators, state and federal, and on and on, need to be questioned and may, and be kept to toe line on what is being said and what's being done. And one quote, for instance, it was our Secretary of State had a very strong statement about that. She had said this on her website, that I'm honored to serve the people of Colorado, the Secretary of State will protect our elections and increase voter turnout, fight secret political spending, and provide Colorado's small businesses and entrepreneurs with the tools they need to succeed. Our state and country deserve a democracy that we can believe in. Went on to say, she knows firsthand how important it is for every vote to count and Colorado's voice to be heard, no matter the background or income. She will protect the right to vote, fight secret political spending, improve transparency, and stand up to those who try to bend the rules or break the law. A well-thought-out statement, and I have no question that there was any shenanigans involved in any of this. It's simply open to misunderstanding, and that's my whole, my whole point.
Mayor, I believe we need to move forward. We've got a really long meeting tonight.
And that's, in any case, that was all that, that I had to say. If this accomplishes anything, it, it prevents the possibility, not prevents, but it certainly works in that direction towards preventing shenanigans that could happen. They look back on the fact that a question was brought up about this. In any case, I would move to, to move the discussion to Section J, I believe it is, J 2, as a resolution, so that we can discuss it further and have an actual vote and decide if that's what we want to do.
It's been moved to, moved the discussion to J resolutions. Is there a second?
Motion fails for lack of a second. So we will go on to the table discussion donation for SLOV Big Band.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind if I butt in for just one second? And can we get a picture of Lisa Clark and the police officers with the vendors? Please?
Sure.
I think that's a good idea.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ladies can smile.
Hold the tip here. How cute.
One for each of you.
Can I just say, I want to thank you for the donation and the work you put in to make this happen. Things like this, they go a really long way to help kiddos through these tough times. So it's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. My honor.
We need a presentation, so we need to do that.
We're going to take it off the table and motion.
Yes, ma'am. Take it off the table and make a motion. Because we tabled it.
Mr. Mayor, they are a nonprofit organization.
State and county's type request of, whatever you can do, whatever you need, should hold out. Is there actually a current decision?
Is there any money in this last meeting? There's still.
Is there any money in our?
Five hundred dollars left. It's special funds.
Would you like to donate? Do you have fifty? Would you like to donate to this?
I'm going to stay, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know. I'm allowed, so I'm allowed you guys to decide.
We were just concerned whether they were an entity or not, whether we were going to that or not. And to answer your question, if they're a nonprofit organization, how we feel comfortable.
So is that in form of a motion?
How we move to, but we have, we have a hundred and fifty. Is there anything else?
First, we have to take it off the table.
Right.
We have to motion, we have to have a motion to take it off the table.
I will motion to take this discussion for the donation for SLOV Big Band off the table.
Now we can talk about it.
It's been moved in second to take, take this discussion off the table.
I'm curious to know when that fund will be renewed again.
January 1st.
So we have the month of December with?
This is your last meeting.
Other requests. Oh, that's good. There you go. Sweep the floor.
Need to have a motion take, to take it off the table.
Yes. So Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to remove this discussion from the table and to open it up for discussion.
So I would move to donate a hundred and fifty dollars to donate, to donate to SLOV Big Band.
Second.
It's been moved in second to donate a hundred and fifty dollars to SLOV Big Band. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to donate a hundred and fifty dollars to the SLOV Big Band.
Can I have this county's request? Linda?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine. How are you all? On behalf of, on behalf of the Montavista Chamber of Commerce, we have submitted paperwork to request a discount for utilizing the Sky High building for three of our events to be held, the first part of 2020. The first one is the Southern Rocky Mountain Ag Conference and Trade Show that will be held the first week in February. The Crane Festival will be the first weekend in March because of leap year. And then the third one will be the Home Garden and Outdoor Living, which will be the middle of April. And so we're asking as a nonprofit if you would approve a discount for us to be able to utilize the Sky High complex. And I know that our chamber manager had submitted the insurance certificate, the, a copy of our nonprofit organization registration with the Colorado State, Colorado Secretary of State, and then the request for the discount.
Simply a thing of cash, right?
You have?
Mr. Mayor, it's the standard discount that was requested for these events, and they are qualified as nonprofit. So the rental amount's $5,470, the discount request is $1,094. The rental cost after the discount would be $4,376, and staff would recommend approval of this request. Is that all of the, that's all three events? Yes, sir. Is the Crane Fest? Yes.
The, I think that you, you actually, it's not the Crane Fest that, you know, because you do, you provide the red?
Oh, that's separate.
Yes. So basically, really, it's the Southern Rocky Mountain Agricultural Conference and the Home Garden and Outdoor Living Expo.
I would move to approve the discount for the Chamber of Commerce for the three events that they have.
I would second that motion.
Been moved in second to approve the discount for the Chamber of Commerce for the events for the Southern Rocky Mountain Ag Conference. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries for discount request for Sky High for the Chamber.
Well, on behalf of the Montavista Chamber, we thank you.
Appreciate what you guys are doing.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. IT, I'm going to present the new webpage. Right on.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just wanted to present tonight the new Montavista webpage and give you a little history on how we got to it. It was kind of interesting. At budget time, we're all looking for corners to cut, wherever we can save a little bit of money. And it became apparent that the website that the city had, the hosting service on that was approximately $2,000 a year that the city was paying out for that. So in an attempt to reduce that cost, and IT having just gone to a state conference, we learned of a state-level service that would provide free hosting to the city, and they would do a free redesign of the page and put it all up for us. So in our budget process, we, we didn't ask for the money for hosting for 2020, and the state missed their date to start designing the new website. They got backlogged and couldn't do it. So that left us in a position of, the state says, yeah, you can have free hosting, but we can't design a site for you, and we can't get it done before the end of the year for you. So IT stepped in and designed the site themselves, all in-house, with the help of staff. Our finance director provided the pictures for the majority of the site, and we were able to stand up a brand-new site, all in-house, at no cost to the city. So if you take a look behind me here, you'll see that site is now up. We've done several things to improve efficiency for the city. Things like a job posting. Used to have to go through our PIO and get, and then take from the PIO to go out and write code to put that job posting on. This is now Google Drive-enabled, in, in alignment with our goals for the city, to make it quicker and more communicative to the public. Our HR manager could simply go to a Google Drive and drop a job description and announcement into the drive himself. So those are the type of improvements. All the forms for every department, every department has direct control of that now. They can just drag it over into a Google Drive, and it's online instantly. So we're, we believe that it will help communicate everything that we want to, to the public in a more efficient manner than it has been in the past. So this was your entire IT team, your PIO, your finance director, the city manager, and all your department heads spent many hours reviewing the site and putting that together and approving that and getting that online for you. Any questions? I have one request of council. When you get your new council fully seated next year, we'd love to have a picture of you to put up on the website. So we'd like to have all the council come in towards the beginning of February for a picture. All your department heads are now online, and we have a few fun pictures and some department pictures in there for people to enjoy as well.
That's awesome. It's a lot more personal. I like it.
We've already had quite a few comments on it, so, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Frank Santiago. I'm the area manager for waste management, and I really don't have a presentation more along the lines to, to review the price increase for waste management for 2020. There was a letter dated November 7th, 2019. I'm not sure if you have that in your packet or not, but we basically base our rates, our rate increases, off of the Consumer Price Index published by the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. We're asking for a 3.6% increase, which is in line with the water sewer trash increase. Unfortunately, the cost to, to provide service doesn't stay the same. It increases on an annual basis, and, and really, waste management over the course of the last 10 years, we average increased costs on an annual basis about 5%, but we base it off of this index, and the index is saying that it's a 3.6%. So I stand here. Do you have any questions or concerns?
I have a question. We kind of touched on this, but we've talked about recycling before. Is that something that's available or planned to be available?
We, we talked to operations last year, and the, the issue with recycling is, is that it's, it's in, part of the industry that's kind of been turned on its head over the course of the last two years, primarily as a result of, of where we move commodities. So when we were, you know, China took 30% of all recyclables that are produced around the world, and the majority of our recyclables that we, we collected, we shipped to China. Since then, since 2017, there's been a variety of, of environmental regulations that China has, has gone through, which prevents certain recyclables from going to China. So now, essentially, we have zero recyclables that we're sending to China. So what that did is, you know, they pushed a lot of that supply, you know, the recyclables that we collected, there wasn't a lot of end markets for it. Over the course of the last couple of years, things have improved a little bit, but the cost of recycling really has been pronounced. So there was a time where, you know, as far as collecting recyclables, it, it, it costs the same as collecting trash, right? The trucks typically don't know the difference between what's trash and what's recyclable, but it's also, it's how you process it. So trash, you know, goes to a landfill, it gets covered with dirt, it's a lot cheaper process. Recyclables have to go to a facility, they have to get sorted, and then those commodities have to move in, in particular directions. That costs. But recycling was typically free or low cost for so long, because we were able to sell those commodities and get that value, and that value of the commodity would offset, offset the, the cost to collect it. All that to say is that that changed dramatically, and now recycling, there's a huge cost. And why that's in, why that matters to Montavista is obviously because when you're in a pre- And why that's in, why that matters to Monovista is obviously because when you're in a particular area that doesn't have a lot of outlets and that recycle, those recyclables have to move to a place where they can be, you know, sorted and that type of stuff, it, it increases the cost even more. So in places, you know, that have outlets for recyclables, like the material recovery facility, which is where we take recyclables to sort them out, when they're close by, the cost has doubled or tripled. But when you're this far, you have to pay the cost of transportation on top of the material recovery cost, which is, the processing cost right now is about $100 per ton. Not to say that it's not worth it, it certainly is, it just makes it difficult to invest in those opportunities out here. So in a long, and that's a long way to say, we are, things are getting better, and the, and the possibility of doing something for Monovista is certainly there, we just want to make sure it's the right program. So does that mean that it's a gable-top situation where we put up a, you know, a roll-off and we allow people to take recyclables there and then we move that once a month and to reduce, to keep the cost relatively low? You have to start, you know, it's that kind of crawl before you walk, before you run, before you fly type of scenario. So I think there's some, certainly some possibilities there, we just need to talk about them, but ultimately, there is a significant cost, cost of recycling.
No?
No, that's not a no, but, but, but it's also, it's also the reality of the situation, and, you know, if you're trucking recyclables across, you know, across the state, or, you know, is that really having the environmental impact that you want? And I want to be very careful because there's, there's a lot of young folks in here. Recycling is a tremendously important thing for us to do environmentally, and it's also the right thing to do, and it's very possible to do, it's just more difficult in places that are a little bit isolated. So I think we can do something, sure.
My question would be is, do you know, one of your competitors here does offer single-stream recycling?
And that's fantastic. And, and so there's, there's scales, right? So a smaller competitor absolutely can probably provide that service because they can develop outlets, right? Because I don't know where they're taking that material, you know, perhaps there's a local person that's taking the plastics, or there's a local glass blower or something, you know, so sometimes the smaller competitors do have the ability to move a little bit more nimbly than, you know, a bigger organization like Waste Management. I'm just telling you that from our perspective, we would collect it and take it to our main facility that's in Franklin Street, Denver, and process it there, and then put it into those bundles, and then sell those commodities. So I'm very happy that our, that there's a local competitor providing that service, and certainly we will continue to evaluate it. I've heard it loud and clear, we need to see what we can do for Monovista in terms of recycling, and we'll get back with our operations folks and talk about doing something because I, I do think there's something that can be done. There's still some value in some of the recyclables, like cardboard and aluminum, of course, and some of those other things, but typically, like a local competitor can take that and move it right here. There's probably some business here that could utilize that. That's a little bit different than how we operate. I hope that makes sense.
Forrest, you said you had some of that information in your report to Waste Management? Do you? Or did you use that later?
Well, Mayor, actually, all I really talked about was the differential between the Super Price Index, Water, Sewer, and Trash, and the National Index. Certainly, they provided the data from that index. You know, the national inflation rate right now, or at least when I printed this out a couple of days ago, you know, is 2.5%. So it's not, you know, it does lead that, but generally, we've seen the last couple of years, that cost center does lead the general inflation rate. But it was just to show you the differential there, and, you know, also just to remind you that this is at your discretion. So it is not, you know, it's not mandatory to approve it, but certainly that you can do that at your discretion. And obviously, they have costs, or the Waste Hallar has not brought in a similar proposal.
You guys have any questions?
Didn't we approve an increase last year? I think we did. Did we?
Yes, and generally, we've seen that annually.
The last two years.
Yes. About every year that we've had a contract with Waste Management, their costs have gone up, and the rate increase has been passed on to the customers, and in your packet you have basically a differential, like for a curbside, one container goes from $17.39 to $18.02. So it's not astronomical, but it's certainly a differential there.
And if I, if I may add, Mayor, Council, you know, the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics puts out a variety of indexes, and of the CPI index, there's a sub-index of water, sewer, trash, and then there's a sub-index of that, water, sewer, trash, which is garbage and trash. If you look at garbage and trash, it's probably this year is about 4.6%. So we're kind of in the middle of the, the WST, which is water, sewer, trash, and the regular CPI. Just keep in mind that the CPI evaluates a variety of, of cost increases across the board, so the cost of bread, the cost of flour, which has nothing to do with our industry. And so we use the water, sewer, trash index because it's more reflective of what's happening in our industry. And that's, you know, again, I will say that Waste Management in particular, our costs are increasing more than 3.6%, but we've, we've settled on that as being the index, as the marker for it. So that's why we were asking for 3.6%.
Are we having more questions? So Mayor, you need a motion that discusses pleasure to approve the rate increase of 4.6%. So need a motion? And second?
3.6?
3.6. From 17 something to 18.02? Curbside one, yes.
Yeah, and, and I will say, and we, this is typical of Waste Management, I mean, we do ask, you know, most of our communities, and I will say that as a cautionary tale, and I'm not suggesting anything, but, you know, if you don't allow for the small increases on annual basis, you will pay a larger increase at some point. And whether it's to Waste Management or to another hall or some, it all will come to fruition at some juncture, right? So you can take the 3.6% on an annual basis, or you can wait four years and make it the problem some other council to approve a 10 or 15% increase. So there, there is a cost to doing business, and that's the reality of, of the situation. So.
Well, apart from that reason, I would move to approve the 3.6% increase for Waste Management.
You have a second? I have a motion. You have a second? I'm sure we'll be seeing it from the elements, too.
So, if I can chime in, Waste Management has always been good to the city in our city cleanup of the day, to donate those 40-yard dumpsters to us. So we take those every time at least, we need to 10 dumps every year, and we also have two clean-up days a year. Yeah, a lot.
Well, that makes me feel better. It does.
Nobody likes cost increases.
But I don't think nobody really likes their trash sitting in their yard, or, or then, but it's part of my week, you know, if I miss my trash, I'm like, oh, man, I need to follow the rest of the trash.
And I'm sure Waste Management, as a corporation, would continue to help us with their city efforts to clean up the town.
I would second that.
Been moved in second to approve the 3.6%. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
No.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries 4 to 1 to allow for a 3.6% increase with Waste Management.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much, and we appreciate the business from Monovista. You have a great evening.
Thank you, G. Okay, we will move to citizen comments. And Council, welcome to the unscathed comments. Please limit this comments to three minutes. We will not take action in this meeting. Do they have any comments?
You mean, I, I can't get up? Please? No. Pass it. I'll follow.
I'm going to follow.
Mayor, Council, I'm Wayne Whitner. I'm a citizen here, I'm also the pastor of First Christian Church. There's a proposal or come before the city, and I wasn't, I wasn't able to be at the zoning and planning commission.
Wayne, this is in regards to the public hearing for the cat shelter. You need to wait till that public hearing.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait then. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other comments?
One little comment serves ladies.
Please feature.
Yes. Margot Alexander, and it's a, just welcome, hi, everybody. I just was curious as to what is happening, the Diesel Company off of, on Adams, and the trash situation in that yard that has been there all summer. Is that progressing anywhere? Or is anybody aware of that? Has, has our ordinance person looked into that? That trash has sat there all summer, there's a dumpster there, there's trash there, and it's still sitting there. And I thought if you owned a business, you were responsible to have a trash service. And that's my question.
Any address, Congress?
I beg your pardon?
This business, we talked about our address.
It's next to the dry cleaner on Adams.
On the east side of the street?
Yes.
Pull out the coat off, you're like that. Yeah. So we'll, we'll have.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right. You go to public hearing. You adjourn the, not adjourn, you assess this meeting to go to a public hearing, correct? Or recess, Council, to go to a public hearing? Mr. Treel?
All right. Okay, the city council will hold a public hearing today, December 5th, during its regular meeting. The public hearing is to consider the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the application for a special review application submitted by potential property owner Lisa Karst, located at 257 Adams Street here in Monovista. Applicants is applying for a special review used to open a cat shelter. There was a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting, and I believe they've recommended approval. I don't recall if there was much in the way of opposition, but again, it'd be public hearing before the council. We'll go ahead and allow the applicant to speak as to what she intends to do at the 257 Adams Street location, and then if there are other folks that wish to speak in favor, we'll allow that as well, and then we'll take and listen to any opposition from any other folks. So if we can, Lisa Karst, go to the podium, and if you would state your name and address for the record, and then if you would tell the council what you're proposing to do.
I'm Lisa Karst, and I live in South Fork. And what I'm proposing to do is open a cat shelter. I'm sure everybody is aware that we have too many cats on the streets. Cats Alive, I'm the president of Cats Alive. We've been working since 2013 as a nonprofit to try to help the, the community cats through TNR, which stands for Trap Neuter and Return. Generally, people who practice TNR have known for decades that it's more effective than simply removing the cats. We now have good scientific studies proving it, so we know that TNR is the way to do this. Cats Alive initially was doing about 100, 150 cats a year. This year, I think we're going to hit 400. Our operations are now being hampered by the lack of a shelter, so we don't have a dedicated spay-neuter surgery, we don't have a place to hold stray cats we trap by accident who may be abandoned, we don't want to put them back on the street if they're tame, we don't have a place to organize our foster homes for stray kittens that need to be tamed down and adopted. All of these purposes could be served with a very small shelter. We expect our capacity to be about 30 cats. And the part of the reason of staying small is its capacity of care. You need to have few enough animals that you can always care to, for them to high standards. You don't ever want to have so many cats that they get sick or neglected or smell bad. We want to adopt cats out. The public is not going to walk into a smelly shelter and adopt a cat. They, they will turn right around and walk out. So it's got to be a nice, clean, good-looking operation. I'm buying the building personally, and I will do the renovations. I have a roofer, I have a contractor lined up to do the interior. I'm a PhD in botany, I'm really excited to rehab that beautiful garden that's right next door. That's, yeah, something I'm very much looking forward to. Yeah, I think, I think our region needs a little cat shelter there, and Cats Alive needs it to continue expanding our operations.
What is your hours of operation? Do you have an idea what you might be doing there?
I'd like to be open to the public five days a week while there are cats and residents who have to be there every day because the place has to be cleaned every single day. So there will be somebody always there daily. But yeah, I expect probably will be closed to the public Mondays and Tuesdays, possibly Sunday, Monday, it's not completely clear yet, but five days a week open is the, is the goal, as well as possibly special events for teaching trapping or foster care.
Procedurally, what would you do to adopt a cat out?
Well, what we do currently is we do a phone interview because our valley is so vast that asking people to drive some great distance just for an interview that may not pan out is not great. It's always better to do an in-person interview, so that would change to an in-person interview with the new location, would allow us to do better adoptions, match people better with the cats. So somebody would come in, they'd do a quick adoption interview just to make sure that they know how to care for a cat, and they have good plans for caring for this cat for its natural life. And then we would have an Adoptables Cat Room in the front where they could go in and meet the cats and find out which one they bond with. They all have different personalities, it's not a one-size-fits-all, so it's very important for people to be able to see a cat. We lose about 25% of our adoptions right now because we don't have a location for people to come and meet with animals. So we'll be more effective that way as well.
Is there a cost to adopt a particular cat?
Yeah, so our cost to raise a kitten is about $100, and that includes shots, rabies, and the surgery. We currently charge $50 a kitten, so we're subsidizing that. Adult cats, we ask $30 to $20, depending on the, the character, age of the cat, if it's special needs. This is somewhere between half to a quarter of what cat adoptions cost in metro areas. But part of that reflects the fact that we have so, so many cats. We really want to encourage people to adopt cats that have been properly vaccinated and fixed, so keeping the cost low is important to us as part of controlling the population.
Have you purchased the building yet, or is it everything contingent on?
It's contingent on approval. I will purchase it tomorrow if you approve. I will purchase it tomorrow if you approve.
Is, is the facility, is it a magnet to like other strays, like other stray cats in the area?
No, because all the cats are contained inside the building.
Like, what about like stray cats? Would they be drawn to the, to the area?
No. Well, there's no, there's no extra habitat for them outside. So there wouldn't be additional food or shelter for them outside. So it won't matter to them that there's cats on the inside. It's, yeah, invisible to them. Yeah, no, it's a reasonable question. It's cat behavior, yeah.
Any other questions by any of the other council members?
And then they'll all go out spayed or neutered, right?
That is the law. In fact, it will be a PACFA-approved facility. So they have 80 pages of rules, about a quarter of which apply directly to a cat shelter, including they just, this year changed the rule that you cannot adopt out an unaltered cat.
And they'll all be vaccinated?
Yes, yes. In fact, I talked to a vet who's going to volunteer for us just yesterday, which is exciting. So she, she's interested in making weekly visits directly to the shelter. And so all of our cats will, will be seen weekly.
And I have a lot to say, but I don't know if this is the time. Do we get, can I?
Well, this probably is the time for a question, you know.
Yeah.
And not opinioning.
You have opinions, okay.
I have a question. I have heard, I don't know too much about cat shelters, dog shelters for that matter. But what I understand is that the regulations are pretty stringent regarding
They are.
everything from appearance to odors to
That's right.
cleanliness, I don't know.
We'll, we'll be redo, right, we'll be redoing the entire interior. Currently, it's, it's paneling in shag carpet, none of which will ever pass PACFA. So we'll be, we'll be renovating that, putting completely washable floors. It's important to be able to sterilize surfaces. Anything that an animal is ever in contact with has to be sterilizable. So it's got to be, you know, something you can leave a cleaning solution on for 10 minutes. Obviously, shag carpet is never clean. The, it has to be odor-free, it's, everything is cleaned daily. We're working with Denver Dumb Friends League on processes and cooperation with them. So they've agreed to take about eight cats every two weeks. So when they take a batch of cats, we will empty out the room that those cats came from and will completely clean that room. So it'll be basically a reset on a weekly basis in addition to the light daily cleanings that PACFA requires. They also require that all waste is contained and removed from the site weekly. So yeah, you're not allowed to run a filthy shelter. You'll lose your PACFA license.
I'm curious, do you have, everything's contingent on?
Approval, that's right.
Do you have contracts in place?
Yes.
Ready to be signed with the vets and for your license with the state?
The license with the, we have an existing PACFA license as a rescue. That only allows us to use an office location as a foster home, limited to eight animals. So to get the full shelter approval, we've got to finish the renovations first and go through inspections. So that's not something we would do right away. I have contractors lined up to do the work. They're ready to go. In fact, they were festering yesterday.
And as far as the, like contracts with the traveling vets, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so
Contracts to make sure that that, that is agreeing like you planned?
Right, we have an existing agreement with Dr. Deal. And that'll continue until the new year, and we have an open shelter. Then we will work with Dr. Amy Casale on regular visits. So again, that, that waits until the renovations are done, yeah.
Any other questions from council?
The only question I have, so you get the facility, you do everything, and there's something that just can't be, that this thing don't?
Yeah. PACFA? Yeah, yeah.
So they come in and say, hey, this is not evidence of work to do this. Then you have a building that you have
That I will just
Done this to, now would you then do what with it in that, in that situation?
Well, that, okay, so that is part of what I'm working with Dumb Friends League on. We're working on the shelter design with them. They've been through this wringer many, many times. And once I've got a draft of where everything will go in terms of plumbing and lighting, and that'll go to PACFA for pre-approval before I start renovations in earnest. We can do the basic surfaces right away. If we hit one of those massive roadblocks that can't be got over, it's still a nice building. We can still use the front as a Cats Alive office. And the back is currently an apartment, which could still be an apartment. It's got a full kitchen and a full bathroom in it. Yeah, it's still, it's still a property I would renovate anyway, I guess.
So you have a plan B?
There's a plan B.
Which I doubt you'll need, but
There's always a plan B when you buy a building, right? Don't go blindly ahead.
I guess, I have one more question. Is it, I think some of the concerns are the proximity to residential area.
Right adjacent, yes.
Is it normal to have a shelter located this close to the residential area?
Not a dog shelter, but there are cat shelters that are this close. I've, I've visited quite a few. One of them actually looks rather like this building, just a larger version of it. And they've even built apartments into their building because it's bigger than they need. And there is an apartment building behind it. They're smack in the middle of a residential area. And other than the sign out front and the cats looking out the window, you wouldn't know. There's no cats running loose. I don't believe that they have any ground floor, you know, cat patio arrangement where the cats would be available to the public, exposed to wandering dogs or, yeah, any, any situation like that. So it does, it does force us to keep the cats indoors, but that's the plan anyway.
Do you want to maybe step down and see if there's anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the proposal?
Am I a person that can do that? Can I take off my council hat and just be a citizen? Can I do that?
Say your name and would?
I'll sign too. I'm Kathy Ellithorpe, and I have, am here in favor of the cat shelter. I worked at the animal shelter for about three years. And our animal shelter can no longer take cats. We didn't have the facility. We were not PACFA-regulated, and they made us turn down cats. We can't take cats. And I'm telling you, every day I'm at the animal shelter, we get four or five calls for a cat that is injured or, or a cat that's pregnant and, and we can't take care of it. Or feral cats, can you come help us trap them? And we can't do anything to help them any longer. I do know that there's some concern about a cat shelter so close to, to, to homes. I only live a couple blocks from there, and it doesn't bother me at all. You're not going to see the cats. You might see them in the window like you do in a house on Main Street, just you see a cat in the window. You're not going to have any odor or smells. PACFA has got such strict regulations for cat shelters that you're, I'm going to tell you, these gals are going to be busy scrubbing and cleaning all the time. You're not even going to know it's a cat shelter unless you go in the office and, and inquire about a cat or a kitten. And one of the things I want to remind everyone of, and I can do this because it's my last night on council, you can't have it both ways. You cannot go on social media and downtown and in the newspaper and complain about cats and cats in your yard and cats in your flower bed and then be against a cat shelter that will help me take care of that problem. I moved into a house that has a rock yard. Let me tell you, I was the depository. I was the Third Avenue depository for cat stuff when I moved in there. And I was one of the people complaining about cats in the neighborhood. My solution was to get a deer thing that will, is motion censored, and it would squirt the cats. And I didn't have any problems with cats in my yard after that, or squirrels. And sometimes intruders got, what, two, other intruders? But at the end of the day, you can't have it both ways. You can't, you can't say, I'm upset about the cats in the community, and there are feral cats all up and down. They're around Safeway, they're up and down the Main Street alleyways where we have restaurants. I see them, I see them when I come through town at night late and it's dark. You see those cats out. Now we have a place that we can put them. Now we have a facility where if somebody has a stray cat, if somebody has a mother cat, if somebody has kittens who are ill, you can take those cats there. And, and it's not a bad thing. I think these, they're going to have a wonderful facility. And I, I really spent a lot of time trying to think about this myself and decide would I really want that to be across the street from me? You know what? Why not? My neighbor has cats and they sit in the window and look at me all the time, and my dogs bark at them, and that's what happens. I think it's fine. I don't think that there's, I can't think of one negative aspect to having this place be a cat shelter. And I know that the zoning commission is very stringent in their questioning as well. And I also know from my own experience, if PACFA comes in and does an inspection and finds something they don't like, they're going to have to be able to hose that whole place down and keep it sterile. They'll close them down. And I know that Lisa's not going to spend all that money and get closed down. So there you go. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I better sign this.
Is there anyone else in wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? All right, do you want to state your name and address for the round?
My name is Jenny Nearing, and I live at 416 Adams Street, which is a block or perhaps 100 yards from this location, and I'm in support of this. I'd like to concur or agree or second Kathy's comments on the importance of having a shelter for stray cats. The, the neutering, the altering of the, of the animals is a very important thing to control populations, obviously. I'm also a wildlife biologist, and my specialty is birds. And surely everybody knows the impact that cats have on birds. And so the notion that these cats are going to be indoors inside of cat shelter is, the notion that that would be alarming is silly to me. But I'd also like to remind everybody of a report that I hope you all heard in September that we've lost 30 billion birds since 1970. And a lot of that has, there's a lot of reasons for that, but domestic cats is a big, is a big one. So I'm in favor of this for a number of reasons. It's a responsible thing to do. It's a responsible thing for our community to have. It's, it's ethical treatment of animals is to have a shelter. So, and like I said, it's in my backyard, and I'm pleased to have it in my backyard. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
I don't know, I don't, I'm not against it or anything. I just have some questions that I'd like to find out about because I, I'm across the alley from it. And I'm a pet owner, and I'm sorry to talk about cats when I have dogs. But we've, I've had cats before. But one thing I, how much of this stuff is in, in writing that was given to the board? Is it in just verbal or is it writing? And because verbally, things can be changed without any action. But if it's in writing, okay, here's, here is in writing now. If you change that, you have to go and get something done about it to approve the change. And I was, what I got, maybe I don't hear right. But I heard that these feral cats or alley cats, whatever you want to call them, cannot be out as pets. So what are you going to do with them? You're neutering, that's great. My dog has been taken care of, so, but the only thing, it's, what are you going to do? Put them back out? And maybe we won't have a bunch of them. But as a pet owner, these winters get awful cold. Are they going to be out running, trying to hide to get out of the cold? And Council Kathy Ellithorpe, what would happen if dogs that were loose here in town and the code enforcer takes it to the shelter? The, the dog is neutered, but it's been out in the wild all the time. What, you cannot release that animal back out into the cold when it's not going to be taken care of. This is my concern. I love pets. I love cats, I love birds, I love trenches anywhere. If you had a pet, if you've had kids, you've had a lot of pets. But the only thing, what are we, what's in writing? So we as citizens know exactly what is going to happen. I'm not against it. If I didn't have a dog, I'd have a cat. But the only thing, what is the council going to approve? If it's, if what, what they want to do, how are they going to do it? If it is in writing, then the council has something to approve.
I think Lisa could speak to that. Can you speak to that? Your PACFA rules and what you're
So, so I'm hearing a couple of different things in there. I'm hearing a couple of different concerns. The, the PACFA rules are extensive and will ensure that the shelter itself is neat, clean, and well-run. You're also concerned about what happens to the cats that are TNR'd. So when we trap, neuter, and return a cat, it goes back to where it has been surviving, where it knows how to live. If you just put a feral cat out in a random place and it doesn't know where to get food and shelter, it is in danger. But the ones that we release back to where they came from, they just go on with their lives as they did before. However, they're not making kittens. And in fact, the higher proportion of fixed cats you have in a population that has still fertile cats, the lower their production is. So there's a tipping point where putting cats back out in the community after they've been fixed actually reduces numbers faster than just removing them with keep breeding up and keep breeding up as faster than you can pull them off the streets. So we're very much in favor of putting the cats back where they know how to live. We don't relocate them to places that they don't know, with some very specific exceptions. We have a number of TNR'd colonies that had to be moved because they're in danger where they were. Those cats have caretakers who visit them regularly and make sure they're healthy and have food and water. But that's very rare.
And that's only a portion of the cats you're going to take in. A lot of cats you're going to have at the shelter will be spayed or neutered and, and vetted. They'll have all of their shots.
Right.
And then you will either adopt them to homes
Right.
As in-home cats, or you'll send them out of the valley
Right.
To other shelters in Denver and the Front Range.
Part of why I want the shelter is so we are not in the position of putting tame stray cats back on the streets.
Currently, there's nowhere in the valley for cats to go. I don't believe this I don't believe does Alamosa take them?
They cannot, no.
We can't, the Conner Animal Shelter can't take them, the Alamosa Shelter can't take them. And so currently, Wayne, they are just living out there, even house cats. You know, we would try to take in as many house cats, people move, or whatever, I'm allergic, whatever. And we can't, no one can even take those now, but the cat shelter would be able to, and they'd get them out of the valley to good homes.
Yeah.
Well, my main concern is what is in writing that we know exactly what's gonna happen? And when things change in the dark ages when I was younger, but the handshake is long gone. What, you handshake, and this is the way it's gonna be. Or you could be verbal or something. We need to have things in writing so this, we know this is what's gonna happen. And then if there has to be some changes, then it can go before the council and go on. This is my main concern.
And I think it is, with all the PACFA rules and then with your own shelter policy, you'll have that as well.
Right. It will all be written, and I'd be happy to bring a copy of that back to the council. I would also be perfectly happy if you were to give me a conditional approval on, say, you know, a certain number of cats, indoor only. You know, the things that the neighborhood is concerned about, I'm very happy to have those be part of a conditional approval to make sure that the neighbors are not worried about us. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do you feel better?
Well, yeah, but I haven't seen anything in writing. Maybe, maybe that's enough for the public to say, maybe once they get open and I can go in there and I can see all that, that's fine. But if we had stray dogs that are going all the time, and that's where they've been, if we took it to the shelter, you would not neuter them and put them back out.
No.
So this is, this is my main concern, and I'm one that thinks that things need to be in writing so that the citizens here know exactly what it's taking care of. And right now, I haven't seen anything that says what is gonna take place. And I'm not against cats, I love cats, but I just want things to be clear.
Out in the open.
Yeah.
So I have a question for us.
Thank you.
If, if something would go wrong, and I don't think this is the way it's gonna go at all, but if the shelter would not be clean and tidy, if it would cause problems, what sort of recourse do the citizens or councils have at that time? And maybe that'll answer a lot of questions, or help anyway.
Okay.
Is that your name, Forrest?
Forrest Norberg, City Manager, Santa Ana Vista. So I'm gonna answer your question kind of a long, roundabout way because the planning commission kinda went over some of this as well. So, you know, first of all, as far as the capture, treat, and release program goes, I will make a point to the citizens that Santa Ana Vista Police Department and my office, et cetera, were working on a proposal to do very much the same thing with taxpayer dollars. Because we do have a cat problem, and we do actually recognize that if you're able to capture, and you're giving them their shots too, if you will, treat them so they can't make babies, and you release them again, it does have that impact on the population. And that was actually something that we were considering and kind of had the chief and I and some other folks worked on to kind of see what it cost out of. The cost to the taxpayers to do this is a couple hundred dollars cat. So honestly, when this proposal came forth, it was like, well, that's exactly what we're talking about doing at not a cost to the taxpayer, but rather to interested parties and donors. So from that standpoint, this is not regards to the location, per se, it's in regards to the concept of doing this. And cats are a lot different than dogs. I'm allergic to them, so whatever. But the point being is that the concept is very valid, plus the concept of actually having a facility that can adopt cats out. That's really what, if you look at the Conner Animal Shelter, they take animals in, they perform those functions, they adopt them out, it's a no-kill shelter, it's the same concept. So, you know, that's a positive, and that was the discussion we had with the planning commission, that's a positive benefit. Now, as to the regulatory things, if the council considered approving this proposal for this special review use, you know, staff has a number of conditions which you'd recommend to council. Now, the overall regulation is PACFA, right? And I'll say with my past experience of working for another community in the valley, looking at doing an animal shelter, the regulations are huge. It's a highly regulated item. So if there was an issue where there was a problem with the neighbors, those neighbors can report those to the State Department of Agriculture, the state veterinarians, and because it's a licensed facility, they're bound to come down and make inspections. I believe they make annual inspections anyway, but if there's a complaint, they need to come look at it. Some of the conditions that the staff would recommend for this is in fact, as indicated by the applicant, that the design of the shelter itself would be PACFA-approved. Also that they keep records of their complaints, which of course they're required to do, as is the Conner Shelter. And that the written shelter policies will also be provided to the city for not really approval, but so that we know what they are as well. Also, one of the contingencies would be either proof of purchase of the property or the signature of long-term lease in order for this special review use to actually take place. Now, the applicant's indicated that they currently have a license for a shelter that has up to eight cats, and that could be operated in the same facility if it went that way. That's obviously not the intent, but it'd have to be a licensed facility, it'd be inspected if there are issues with the neighbors. Those can be reported, and the state will, does this kind of enforcement. City really doesn't. And, sorry, and the other condition really goes to the state licensure. So in order for this use to exist, the state license would have to be a copy, you would have to provide it to the city. So I think that, you know, as the case with any animal shelter, it is a state issue, you know, and certainly if the city received complaints, we would pass those on, work with the applicant, but as well as with the state if it became necessary. We've had, you know, neighbors speak in favor of this this evening, so that wasn't a factor from the staff recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we do believe that the conditions that I've outlined would provide the assurances that Mr. Whitner spoke of in general. Now, the philosophy of catching, treating, and releasing, if you will, it's valid, there's scientific data behind it, and honestly, if we could do anything that, one, gets cats adopted and off the street, gets cats healthier that are on the street, and reduces the overall population, that's definitely a benefit to the city. You know, I worked in another town in the valley, and that was a huge problem there as well. And this is a privately, you know, it's a great thing that it's not government doing this, it's a private entity doing it, and, you know, certainly staff is supportive of the application, you know, at the pleasure of the council, but we certainly would also recommend these conditions. And I think that those are the assurances that the community would have, that it's properly operated and doesn't perform any form of nuisance to the neighborhood or the Sorry for the long answer. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the... State your name and address for the...
Margot Alexander, 359 Adams. And I am not in opposition to a cat shelter. I think it's a great idea, we definitely need one. My only problem is it's a block and a half from restaurants. Is that a problem? It is a concern of mine. My only problem is your location. If it were somewhere else, it would be hunky-dory. I am just concerned that it is on Main Street in Santa Ana Vista, in town, and that is my only concern. Otherwise, I recommend you, I think you're doing a fantastic job, and I have learned stuff from things you have said that I didn't know, but I am still, that little issue, you know, that bothers me, and that's just what I feel personally. And if, you know, if things go through, I will help. I am a pet owner, I love animals, and we definitely need a cat shelter, it's just the location that bothers me. So, there it is.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? All right, doesn't look like we have any other folks that wish to speak here, so we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council. Back from recess. So we need a motion on this, by the lots of all the paperwork I see, it was very intent to have to do this. It was very well explained, so to have paperwork for the citizens that weren't able to attend, I think it's very clear.
So do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move that we approve the cat shelter by Lisa Carst at 257 Adams Street, because it's the responsible thing to do, as Jenny said.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the cat shelter. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would strongly recommend that the conditions as outlined when I spoke are included in the motion and the approvals.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion to include the conditions that Forrest mentioned about the proper running and complaints and those things.
You just have to read that into your second. I'll accept that as my second. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries for approval of the cat shelter with the conditions as outlined by City Manager.
You are closing on the building tomorrow morning at 8:00. You guys want me to write the settlement statement to the city to have proof of that?
Yes, please. And if you'd just bring those to our city clerk.
Okay. I think I can.
Thank you. We'll welcome another business into the city, I guess.
I'm excited.
Resolutions. Forrest, this will be it. Or Jenny? Jenny, did you guys...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm here to present Resolution 2019-11. This resolution is to rescind Resolution 2019-9 for adopting the annual mill levy certification for the City of Santa Ana Vista, Colorado, for the year beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020. So if you'll recall, we previously had this resolution to adopt the mill levy for 2020. Technically, or usually, the county, when we do this, we, the final certification isn't different from the certification that we had earlier. However, they came back with a different assessed value, so we do have to rescind the previous resolution and pass this new resolution for the mill levy. So the difference in numbers was 2019-09, the assessed value was 26,875,259, whereas the final certification came in at 26,808,659.
Million?
Million, sorry. Wow! 26,808,659.
So first, we need a motion to rescind the previous.
Actually, Counselor, it's combined in the resolution, so if he passes the resolution, the effect will be to rescind 2019-09.
So I move to approve, I move to approve Resolution 2019-11, rescinding Resolution 2019-9, and adopting final certification of the mill levy.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2019-11, rescinding Resolution 2019-09, and adopting final certification of mill levy. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution 2019-11.
Thank you, Jenny.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, before you is the second and final reading of Ordinance 898, an ordinance to provide for the planting and maintenance of trees and shrubbery located on or adjacent to the city-owned property and on public right-of-ways, amending the Santa Ana Vista Municipal Code and replacing Ordinance 685. This is the ordinance that kinda governs our urban forest and establishes the Tree Board as an advisory board to City Council.
Did you ever read that note? Was that the last meeting, right?
Last meeting, yes, sir.
I did read it.
So I move to approve on second and final reading, the second and final reading of Ordinance 898, an ordinance to provide for the planting and maintenance of trees and shrubbery located on or adjacent to city-owned property and on the public right-of-way, and amending the Santa Ana Vista Municipal Code, replacing Ordinance 685.
Not seconded. It's been moved and seconded to have the second and final reading of 898 ordinance, an ordinance providing planting and maintenance of trees and shrubbery located on and on or adjacent to the city-owned property, on public right-of-ways, amending the Santa Ana Vista Municipal Code, replacing Ordinance 685. Is there any more discussion?
No, I'd just like to thank Rob and the Tree Board for all the work.
Tree Board, Jim Poston especially did a ton of work redoing this ordinance, so most of the things goes to him and the Tree Board.
Nita?
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to take second reading of Ordinance 898.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Jim.
895 on mine.
Well, okay, that's type one of the agenda, sorry. That's 896.
It's actually Ordinance 896, and to spark the council's memory, and actually to bring forth this ordinance tonight, this ordinance was tabled in October, so in order to consider this Ordinance 896 tonight, you would need to have a motion to bring the ordinance off the table. Um...
for discussion and potential approval this evening.
I move to remove that motion from the table. I second that motion.
Been moved and seconded, remove the ordinance off the table. Any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion passes to remove Ordinance 896 from the table.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Ordinance 896, updates the Montevista Noise Ordinance, Section 8-7, S100, Loud and Obnoxious Noises. What this ordinance attempts to address is a hole in our current code. We have certain instances of noises being generated in the city, primarily from private residences, that our code in and of itself didn't address. And prior to this being drafted, had a discussion with the chief police regarding that particular problem, and there really wasn't anything to deal with it. So, when we originally presented this ordinance, it's a little complicated. And so, I asked the clerk, you know, we asked you all to table it, and had the clerk reformat it into the format you see tonight, which shows red line, strike-throughs, and red line additions. So, actually, I think it, it makes a lot more sense now where we're going with it. Whether you like the content or not, the format is certainly a little easier to understand. And primarily, the section that was being dealt with in the existing code was 87100, Loud and Obnoxious Noises. And we added some items on motorcycle and standing motor vehicle noises, as well as the, probably the meat of it starts on page three? Yeah, page four, under prohibited acts. And this really gets down to noises generated. It can be from, you know, businesses as well, but primarily from private residences. We had a series of noise calls over the summer that really was difficult for the police department to do any enforcement on. I certainly received those calls in my office as well from neighbors of particular residence primarily, where these noises were being generated at all hours and were clearly quite, quite loud. And I happen to live in a neighborhood where a certain amount of loud noise is generated on a regular basis from a particular property. So, you know, when you can't stand in your own backyard and hear yourself think because someone a block away is doing one of these things, certainly is a nuisance. So, what we try to do is incorporate this into the code as a nuisance so that everybody can have, enjoy the own peace and quiet of their property. I don't know if you've all read it, if you have any particular questions of the sections or any areas of concern. It's presented in this format this evening, and if you accept this and pass it, it'll be first reading. The second reading would be in January on a clean copy that would have the proper signature blocks, et cetera. So, with that, if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to see what I can do with them.
How was the main changes on page three or four?
Right, your, your big red line, really, page and a half of red lines. And all that red are the main changes. So, it addresses vehicle noises. It addresses loud speakers and public address systems. It addresses noise from radios, television sets, musical instruments, and similar devices as well. And also regulates noise from construction sites.
Senior call, the issue previously had to do with penalties and actual enforcement. Is that, is that right?
Well, the, the previous code really didn't prohibit these activities or really address them. These would be covered as nuisances under Municipal Code with a, you know, citation value minimum of $100. And as a nuisance, the person committing the offense could be cited repeatedly, like any other nuisance we have. Although, that's generally not the route that we take from a community policing organization. Usually, someone's issued a citation. Generally, they try to correct the issue before they appear in court. And usually, the judge then is satisfied with that, then it's not an issue. If they repeatedly violate it, then they could be issued additional summons. The idea is not to create additional burden upon the police department per se, but to create some peace and quiet enjoyment of people's own properties.
So, am I reading this right? It's kind of a long read.
It is.
A little bit technical. Obviously, the, the new version here, from what you're saying, corrected some of that so that the, the burden is lessened presumably on the, on the court system and improved in terms of actual enforcement. That's what I...
It, it gives specificity to a steps of charge other than disturbing the peace, which can kind of be applied, but it makes it difficult to the court without specificity of saying, hey, you know, 300 feet away, you could hear this. You know, and if someone wanted to testify in court, they'd say, yes. My residence is 500 feet away, and I'm the one that called in the complaint. And in fact, I could hear it very clearly with my doors and windows closed. So, it creates unenforceable action that has specificity. And I realize it is pretty specific. Our clerk did a lot of research on this, and this comports with a lot of other communities regulations.
I know that's what you're after, and I, yeah, and that's, I've seen that in some of the, it's kind of hard to, I guess, but that sounds like you've accomplished what you're after.
I believe it goes a long way in that direction.
Well, I move to approve Ordinance 896, updating the Montevista Noise Ordinance, Section 87-100, Loud and Obnoxious Noises, on first reading.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 896, updating the Montevista Noise Ordinance, Section 8-7-100, Loud and Obnoxious Noises. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Ordinance 895, Noise Ordinance?
896?
Or 896, I'm sorry.
Or did you do the MOU for Montevista Crane Fest? Sure, I'd be happy to address that. Actually, Tim, you could talk about it, but...
Jenny, if I fall over or anything, tell me. Essentially, this is the city, the chamber, and friends, friends of the Montevista Crane Festival. This is an MOU the city has participated in for the last four years.
I was just trying to think about that. I think it might be closer to six.
Okay.
And it's Friends of the Refugees.
Sorry. I knew I messed something up. Yes, Friends of the SW, no, National, sorry. So, in any case, this basically creates an agreement where all parties participate and agree in making the Crane Festival a success for our community. The city's very familiar with our responsibilities under this, and staff would recommend you approve this for the mayor's signature once again.
I make a motion that we approve the MOU for the Montevista Crane Fest.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded, approve the MOU for the Montevista Crane Fest and Kids Crane Festival. Is there any more discussion?
Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the MOU for the Crane Fest.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Sears. I'm the manager at the Nazarene thrift store. And we have a proposal for you to purchase the garage, the ambulance bays, which we got an address assigned at 712 First Avenue. We've been renting it for about a year and a half now. We've put about $4,000 into improving them already. And we've invested $2,500 to separate the utilities from the old police station already. The total cost on that separation is $5,000. So, we're halfway there already. We've done the electric, not the gas. But we're still paying utilities to the guy that's renting the police station. So, until this whole process happens. The city had valued the property at $30,000. You guys had agreed at a price of $25,000 because of the separation cost. And so, now, we're just trying to make this a formal offer to the city. And I'll say this too. I don't know how the store would keep going if we did not have this property. If anyone walks in that garage, you'd go, oh, my gosh, where did you put this stuff before? So...
Okay. So, I think we've got sort of a proposal to, to buy the building. And the next step, I think, would be to have a public hearing on it. I don't know if everybody remembers, but I've done some research, and I've put together kind of a letter for Forrest on sale of property that might be owned by the city. So, the procedure is to have a public hearing on it. Notice would go out so that folks may comment in favor or against. And then, the, if the council were to approve the sale of that property at a, at a public hearing, then we would have to pass an ordinance approving that sale. And then, we would, we'd be in business. So, before you approve anything, I think that's the procedure we go through first. Okay?
So, can you set that date up, sort of, if you think?
Yeah, I think it'd be a matter of how, you know, from a notice standpoint, I don't know how, when our next meeting would be in relation to having a public hearing, but... You would...
I, January?
Next meeting is January 7th.
What I would recommend?
Yeah, go a little further, probably.
What I would recommend to the council that, you know, based upon, you have a new council. You'll be sworn at that meeting, but you'll also be interviewing the work session following that council meeting, out in front of the vacant seat. And assuming that's all successful, you appoint somebody at that second meeting. So, the recommendation would be, you could have a public hearing on this matter, but you have a fully seated council, and we set that hearing for that date, which is...
I mean, could be November 6th?
January?
Uh, January 16th.
Yeah, that would work, yeah.
So, my only question, Forrest, is then, am I covered as far as rent? Until this process is...
I believe you are all figured out.
Okay. So, what date are we looking at, then?
January 16th.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Okay.
So, can I ask one more question then?
If we're... No. If we're moving this then to a public hearing, can anyone else entertain an offer on it?
It's not a bidding process.
Okay.
That is not an requirement under the city attorney's opinion. So, if he does hold a hearing, consider your offer of purchase.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
Forrest? I'd like to hear your report. I'll give you a brief report.
Okay. Yeah, we took care of most of the fun here. So, one thing that I did want to point out is that if you do wish and desire to cancel the December 19th city council meeting, you would need a motion, a second, and a vote to approve that. Staff obviously has recommended that. And I think we just, in the heat of the last meeting, might, I've skipped that. I said I don't believe we have any pressing matters for that date. So, you know, staff would request that you do that prior to adjournment this evening, if it's your pleasure. I think that's actually all I'm going to talk about tonight, unless you have anything else for me. Thank you.
I would move that we do not hold the December 19th council meeting in respect of holidays and family time.
The prison duty secretary to not hold a regular city council meeting, December 19th. There's no discussion.
Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion to approve cancel, canceling December 19th meeting.
Nita?
Hello. So, I'm good. How are you? I am, we're not even going to talk about that tonight. Because I will be up till midnight putting more lights up on my house. Did you see me spying last night? I drove by and I was spying, and I saw you out there, so I already talked to your wife. So, since my last council meeting, Kids Connection's been really busy. We're still consistently seeing 70-plus kids every day after school. Fridays, we're at about 50. So, numbers are still staying up there. They're keeping us busy, challenging our patience, and we still love them. But November came really quickly and disappeared on us as quickly as it came. November 13th through the 15th, we attended a rural after-school conference in Beaver Creek, Colorado, hosted by the Vale, Valley, Vale Valley Foundation, Youth Power 360, in collaboration with the After School Alliance, Colorado After School Partnerships, the National After School Association. This conference was the first of its kind in the nation, and there were 26 states in attendance. So, it was pretty amazing for Kids Connection, Kids Connection to be a part of that. The Valley was very well represented, I believe. High Valley Community Center was there for Del Norte. They had representatives from the Boys and Girls Club in Alamosa. The after-school program in Center was there as well. And it gave us a lot of really valuable information and opportunities for some social networking and kind of just to get some tools from other rural communities throughout the United States as to how they're running their programs, what they're doing to make their programs succeed with very little amount of, of funds to do so for the amount of kids that they're servicing. So, it was pretty awesome. I'm going to pass these around. I was hoping to have some more information for you guys. Because it's almost three weeks ago. We should have been given some, like, documents from the conference that gave you some more information, but those haven't come yet. There was a lot of information given to us in, in the three days. They should all be different. There might be one or two that are the same. But I'm just passing these around because this is kind of how they were able to document... kind of how they were able to document the training. So we sat in different conferences and work sessions, and the whole time we were sitting through them, they had somebody doing some social roadmaps. And it was basically a blank piece of paper on the wall, and as we were having conversations and talking about what we're doing in our communities and what the presenters were talking about, they laid out this roadmap of everything we were learning throughout the entire conference. So at the very end, we got to walk around and see, like, the entire conference kind of, like, posted around the room. It was pretty amazing. We were able to attend conferences that kind of opened our eyes. We did some trauma-informed care, which was really beneficial for two of my staff. Jessie and I have already been certified with trauma-informed care. So the other two staff, four of us, were in attendance. We're able to sit through that. We were able to... There's one in there that has, like, the power of community and community-wide efforts, and the message was pushed a lot that after-school programs, well, before and after-school programs really cannot succeed without the backing of the community. And it's not just the after-school programs that are doing the work. It really takes the backing of the entire community, just stopping in and offering some, like, some outsourcing, somebody to come in and just interact with these kids. We really need to try to get the community involved a little bit more and get the businesses to recognize how important it is for our community, because these programs would not be in existence throughout the United States if it wasn't for their community standing behind them. So I came back with, like, an entire notebook of amazing ideas. We have a lot of stuff that we are working on to try to change with the work that we're doing with Kids Connection, the way that we're interacting with the kids, the way that we're talking to the kids. It gave us some really valuable takeaways so that we can try to make the work that we're doing that much more impactful. So it was really exciting. I hope to have some more statistics out to you as soon as those get to me, but you can only take so many notes before you're just completely lost. Yesterday, I participated in the second PBIS training with Bill Metz Elementary, and in it was Devon Davies, who is the Bully Prevention Education Grant Coordinator for the school district. They invited Kids Connection in because part of their grant that they are receiving through the school district, it's to get the community organizations involved. Kids Connection was the first organization they reached out to because we service the same children. And so this is a three-year grant term, so over the next three years, we hope to build some positive support for our kids and for our staff so that we are all using common language when dealing with situations with our kids. So it'll be exciting to get through some of the training and see what we could do differently to make a better impact. We are doing the best we can with the tools that we were given and the tricks that we've learned over, like, the last several years, but we never feel like we're doing enough, or we never feel like we're doing it in a way that the kids are receiving it correctly. There's always the potential that the way that I choose to handle a situation isn't the right way to handle it, but we've been doing it for so long, we really aren't aware of proper ways to do it. So we're going to get some extra training for that. Let's see. We hired a new staff member, so I'm super excited to get her started. She hopefully will be starting with us next week. We've had so many kids, we needed some extra hands to deal with them. So other than that, in the next council meeting, you will have, I believe, Paul Wertz coming back to talk from Rio Grande Public Health about the whole vaping issue. Just want you to know, Kids Connection is 100% behind what he is trying to do. I believe it is very much needed in this community. We need to do what we can as adults who are able to think about consequences because we've probably been there and done that, give these kids a couple more years to mature before they make those final decisions for themselves. So I will be back with him then to support him. So I think that's about it. Do you have any questions for me?
I'll slide down.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Hi, Major.
I'm here for...
I don't have anything to, Major, just a quick update. We just wrapped up girls' basketball. Our numbers were higher this season than normal, so that was good. Our two fifth and sixth grade teams ended up playing against each other in the championship, which is not the funnest, but awesome that they both got there. We start boys' basketball this coming week, and our rentals have been pretty steady. And then on the report, there's a couple of community events coming up. We have the Denver Nuggets Skill Challenge, and then we're also doing a skate night in January on the 10th. That's really all I have. One thing that's not in the report, but I wanted to share with everybody, is this Saturday at the Valley 3, they are letting us, the rec department, collect donations in lieu of admission, so we are watching how the Grinch stole Christmas. Do you guys want to spread the word on that? Do you have any questions for me?
When is that again?
Saturday, the Saturday at 1:00, at Valley 3.
Saturday at 1:00?
Yeah. So concession prices are the same, but there's not an admission price, it's just a donation. And everything that is donated goes back to the rec department. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Council committees, city commissions, council reports. Start with you ladies first, Chairman, can you report?
I do not, but this is about over, and it's been fun. Not always fun, but it's a good thing to do for your community. So thank you. And I would say the same thing. I'm about to exit as well, and what a learning experience this has been. And I would encourage anyone who has any interest in this at all to submit a letter. There's an open seat, and they'll make that decision in January, December, January. Anyway, it's a wonderful learning experience, and it's something you can do for your community and a wonderful way to give back and find out the process and see how things really do work.
I just want to say thank you, ladies, for stepping up and joining us in what we have. Like, it wasn't always fun games, you know, but it's definitely a learning process, like I said. I'm glad I got to serve with these guys.
I would reiterate that. Thank you, girls. It's... We've appreciated the input and the help, and I think we made a good team. And welcome, Larry. We're forward to having you move up here so we can't just hide out in the front. You're going to be up front. So we're looking forward to that. And just quickly, been working on some of the things I'm glad you mentioned, the vaping issue. Oh, you said that, I believe. And been working with RGGP, and we do have a pending ordinance, right? Because that's what... Some of that needs to be changed. This has, this whole issue has escalated. If you read some news reports and things, they're finding more and more challenges with it. Meeting Saturday with folks that are pushing very hard towards the issue of suicide prevention, I think that's a big issue. It's not a pleasant one to talk about, but also with the Sky High promotion, I'm probably speaking a little bit out of school, but you should be seeing something out at Sky High very shortly. That maybe it's not going to be a new building, will be eventually, but there will be something going on out there, so keep an eye out for that. Again, working with RGGP, which is Rio Grande Prevention Partners, and communities that care and need to talk some more about that, but I'm not going to do that now. Been working with the rec department for the... Thank you, Kim, for mentioning that and getting the date wrong. And it's the 11th Saturday, second something Saturday, I guess, probably in January, but we're looking forward to some good times. It's just for the fun of it. Get the ice rink exposed. We're planning on actual ice, if we did cooperation from the weather. But if not, we have a dual setup. It's a skate night, so the roller skating will be happening in the All Purpose Building, and the ice skating will be out even with a demonstration. We've been talking about a professional figure skater to come. I mean, we're planning on just a good time. Food, prizes, fun. And I was going to say, whenever I talk about the ice rink, I say weather permitting, but not on this one, because we do have skating going on in the arena, in the All Purpose Building. So mark that down. It's a Saturday, January 11th, right after basketball season starts. So go to the basketball game on the 10th and come out and party on the 11th.
Great, great, too. It's been a pleasure working with you girls on this council. Kathy and Lorenz and Mike went to school together for a long time, so it's been fun getting raised heck together.
There you go.
So I appreciate all your ladies and girls and folks, and your dad, Mr. Oldest, you guys have done a great job, so thank you. And this weekend, we got the holiday czar going on, Friday at the Nazarene Church, and Saturday at the Nazarene Church. You got the parade of lights going on, Christmas tree lighting, Christmas caroling, cocoa and coffee with Santa afterwards. Martha, am I missing something?
I'm looking at the list right now.
The house decorating or...
I forgot the cheetahs.
The businesses were being judged tonight, so tonight was at the house decorating, if you were involved. It's tomorrow night. I still have time to put up more lights, just so you know. I will. And thank you, everybody. Before we go into executive session, I think we need to take a brief recess so these students can bring their papers up to get signed. So...
I made a comment. Lastly, the Swoop Department was introduced, and we had them on. We didn't think he talked about that. I thought something would be said tonight that there was a...
Ken was here and he left. I think he told us there were like 20, 30 of us sold.
30, 40.
They had like six or eight that were complete, but several were... So they're getting a good response.
Okay, so we will take a...
No, we need a motion.
Before we go to executive... You can't take a recess before we go to executive session? Somebody make a motion about the executive session.
I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section
I moved and seconded to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B. Is there any more discussion?
I want to clarify that your motion was for legal profession. I do, so we kind of started that part.
I think Dale repeated it.
This were legal, yeah.
Anita?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to go into executive session.
Now we can take a recess.